And I can vouch for the fact that here in Cape, our streets are just really not great right now. So we're thankful for this opportunity to do it, do it this way. As always, we will start tonight's meeting with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. And so I would ask everyone to rise and join us with, with the invocation. It is Geneva Allen Patterson of St. James AME Church here in Cape Girardeau. He was with us here tonight. Thank you so much, Pastor.
Thank you, Mayor. If we would bow our heads, so thankful to be able to be with you tonight. Lord, we thank you for this snowy day that you have made, dear Lord, and we thank you that KV, KFVS was definitely on it, that alert was there saying around three o'clock and they were just right on target. We thank you, Lord. We thank you for the scripture that teaches us that we are definitely doing a new thing, a different thing. As we are conducting business through this technology, Lord, we're conducting this business through Zoom and we thank you for that. That we do not have to cancel in this day and time. We thank you as we embrace this February 2025 season of love, as we embrace Valentine's Day and President's Day yesterday. And as we celebrate and we embrace Black History Month, we thank you for that, Lord. But we thank you for our great mayor, for our city manager and for these dedicated city council members. And we thank you for our community members that are attending this meeting, Lord. So please give our leaders here the wisdom and the guidance as they deliberate on the agenda items that are being poured before them today. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion as we grow closer, Lord, as a group, to nurture our beloved Cape Girardeau community for the common good of all our citizens. This we pray in Jesus' name and we all said, amen.
Thank you, Pastor. And for the pledge of allegiance, I have my, my trusty flag here. So if you all would join me, please, as we say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice. Thank you. Okay. Maybe some technical problems there, but thank you all. Okay. Our, we did not have anything for our study session or presentations tonight, so we'll begin with communications and reports by council. I would like to start just with one, one notice first. I'll, I'll let everybody know, in case you haven't noticed, our public works department has been very busy already today before the, before the snow arrived and we are very appreciative of all of that, of their ability to pre-treat our streets. I think that will really pay off as we try to clear the streets in the coming day. And they will be very busy tomorrow. As always, we would encourage folks to not travel if you don't have to. Our streets are, are filling up with snow and, you know, if you're not used to driving in snow, then it's generally not a good idea. So please be cautious there. I wanted to share one more thing. Ameren has put out just some tips. They are prepared and ready to help in case of any outages. And so just wanted to share that in case of a power outage that you might have at your home. First of all, as always, stay away from any downed power lines. And then report the outage immediately to Ameren's customer contact center. That is going to be the fastest way for you to get on their radar. The phone number is eight hundred five five two seven five eight three. Or you can go online at www.ameren.com/missouri/ outage-center. So please do that instead of, please don't think that going to Facebook and complaining is going to get your issue resolved. You need to direct Ameren directly. And then you can also, the best way to receive information from Ameren is to register for their text alerts. And you can go to, what you, you'll want to do is, is text Ameren at Ameren, which is two six three seven three six. And then text R E G and that will get you set up for their alerts. And that's all I wanted to share tonight. Council members, anyone else want to make some reports?
I just wanted to second your, your, your discussion and thanks for the city staff that are out there trying to make the streets better. You know, these are, these are interesting times whenever we have these winter storms. And so thanks to all the police, fire, public works that are out there, trying to keep the city of Cape Girardeau growing. They do a great job. And so I'm just thankful for all of them giving their time and being a part of this, this city.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on then to items for discussion. Is there anyone watching online who wishes to make a comment as an advisory board applicant? Nicolette, is there any word from anyone wanting to do that?
I see no one indicating that they would like to speak.
Okay, thank you. And then next is our planning and zoning commission report. Do we have someone making that tonight? Nicolette, do you know, sorry, Trevor, anyone?
Nick, can you hear us?
Mayor, if, if I may, what we might do is if no one's online, then we might pass it into the next council agenda. That way we'll be in-house.
Okay, we might have, is Nick Martin making a presentation? I just saw that pop up. Sorry. Nicolette, do you, do you know if?
When you brought this topic up, Nick raised his hand indicating he wanted to speak unless that was just by mistake. Nick, can you hear us?
Great.
Nick appears unmuted, but we could be having some kind of technical difficulty here. Nick, can we try one more time? Can you hear us? Well, I do apologize if it was something on my, oh. Nick, was that you?
Okay, well, I think it's fair to say we're having some problems. Perhaps the planning and zoning commission report can be submitted to the council and staff via email at a later date or at the, at the next meeting. I don't know. We'll, we'll maybe figure that out. Is that, is that a fair, fair thing to do? I think we'll go, I think we'll go that route. And we'll, so we'll move on to the consent agenda review. Dr. Haskin.
Mayor, thank you, council. We added six, seven and eight. We have an additional item that we removed for discussion later. We'll start with number six. It simply is a resolution to execute an LNI agreement with Quantum Slacks to install a sign located at eleven, located at eleven twenty-nine Broadway. And we have two additional grants regarding law enforcement, reimbursement grant for DWI enforcement. That's an annual grant that we apply for every year. And finally, number eight, another reimbursement grant for hazardous moving violation enforcement. Again, these are two grants that we apply for on an annual basis, Mayor. That concludes the, the consent review, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Haskin. With that, we will move into regular session and begin with a call to order and the roll call vote. This is Weiss-Mueller.
Mr. Bliss?
Here.
Mr. Cantrell?
Here.
Mr. Essex?
Here.
Mayor Kinder?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Conrad. You are not Ms. Weiss-Mueller, but okay, fill right in. Thank you. All right, council, we have an agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor then of approval of the agenda as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the agenda carries. We don't have any public hearings tonight. We have a consent agenda. Mr. Young?
Bill twenty-five fourteen, in ordinance proving a second amendment to redevelopment agreement between the city of Cape Girardeau and Ten Mile Holdings LLC. Bill twenty-five fourteen, in ordinance proving a second amendment to redevelopment agreement between the city of Cape Girardeau and Ten Mile Holdings LLC. Bill twenty-five fifteen, in ordinance vacating the city's interest in parts of Berry Street and Alley Rights Way in the Smelterville subdivision in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill twenty-five fifteen, in ordinance vacating the city's interest in parts of Berry Street and Alley Rights Way in the Smelterville subdivision in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill twenty-five seventeen, in ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an air traffic control tower operating assistance grant agreement fiscal year twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five with Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission. Bill twenty-five seventeen, in ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an air traffic control tower operating assistance grant agreement for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission. Bill twenty-five eighteen, a resolution authorizing the airport manager to execute agreements via rental service providers at the Cape Girardeau Regional Airport. Bill twenty-five nineteen, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a license indemnity agreement with Quantum Slacks LLC to place certain improvements at eleven twenty-nine Broadway in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill twenty-five twenty, a resolution authorizing a grant application to MoDOT for DWI enforcement and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary grant documents. Bill twenty-five twenty-one, a resolution authorizing a grant application to MoDOT for hazardous moving violation enforcement and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary grant documents.
All right, thank you, Mr. Young. Council, we have the consent agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor then of the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, that agenda carries. We had two items removed from the consent agenda tonight. First is bill number twenty-five twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Wayne Wallingford for professional services.
Mayor, oh.
Yes, yeah, please.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you, Mayor. We, we have this on the agenda. Obviously, it's an issue that we've talked about here in this city for several years. And we feel poised now to request authorization to enter into an agreement with Wayne Wallingford, who we feel like is very, very highly qualified for this role due to his impressive resume, strong relationships at both the state and federal levels. He will provide legislative consulting services and represent the city in Jefferson City, Missouri.
All right, thank you, council. Any comments, discussion?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'd, I'd like to, I spoke with Wayne, actually today, and spoke with several of you regarding this. There is, there's no one I have really more respect for and admiration for Wayne. He's also a friend. I know he's in Jeff City now, working for us. One thing that I sure hope happens is that we have all the voices that we have in Jeff City working towards our benefit, that they collaborate with a given agenda from, from us, from the city, so that they, they are working together and not in parallel to advocate for the things that we need. I know that we have elected officials that are, that are doing this as well. I know Wayne will be more concentric to the city and working towards, towards our goals, but they're all the same goal. It's the betterment of our city and our region as well, to include university, the schools, the Chamber of Commerce, SEMO ready. There's a lot of moving parts in government, a lot that I'm not familiar with, but I do know one thing, and that is communication. And without that, nothing really happens. Every exercise I was ever in the service, once communications went down, everything went to, you know, wanting a handbasket. So I hope that there is a real focus on, on collective meetings and reports from Wayne on what, what is transpiring and the impact and potential fallout that things will have for, for our city.
Well, David, I think that was well stated. And I think I agree with everything you just said. And I think that's, all of that is the rationale for, for this hire. You know, the, in the, the agreement that we have, I really like the, one of the very first sentences that it says, entering into this agreement in order to obtain services to monitor legislation and committee hearings and report to the city. That will be one of Wayne's very big jobs that he's doing for us. And I know that will be tremendously helpful to our city staff, to our city council in terms of knowing better, quicker what, what is happening in Jeff City and how those things might impact here, you know, us here in Cape. And then I, I see this role as, as being just yet another form of communication to have in, in concert with, as you stated, you know, our legislative representatives. So I, I think this will be even more helpful, not a parallel, not an either or, but a, but a together, you know, adding some, some real, really good professional service.
I, I'd just like to say that I, I think this is an excellent move. I know Wayne and he served in both the Missouri House and the Missouri Senate. I'm not sure how many people can say that, but he knows everybody on the legislative side. And he just recently was Director of Department of Revenue. The man knows the state budget inside and out. And I think that's going to be a major help to us when we try to get some state funding for some projects that, that would benefit Cape Girardeau.
I have a question, first question, Dr. Haskin or just the city of Cape? I know some council members have been on board a lot longer than I have. And is this our first time putting something in place far as professional services to help us be more efficient and streamlined to communicate the needs of the city? Is this the, now Mark Bliss, you've been around for a long time. Is this the first time of us being able to, okay. I'd like to note too, you know, every year we do evaluations and different things like that with Kenny and some of the things that we've had for are really coming to pass on what the city need. And I think Wayne is a good candidate to help us launch and get started what has been much needed for the city. And a testament of who he is as a man, as being elected by the people at the state and senate level, being appointed by governors like the Director of Revenue, says the magnitude of his respect, professionalism. I think he laid a groundwork and blueprint of being intentional. A lot of times people do have the best interest, as I do, in as council members, but time is limited. I think this approach that Dr. Haskin and consulting with the council allow us to be intentional to be able to make things happen on a larger scale. And I, I think Wayne would be good for us in beginning this process. So Dr. Haskin, I appreciate you leading the way. You know, you know, everything political sometimes could be testy, but you have to make a power move and be able to connect. And I think he's well respected to be able to help facilitate, supplement and firm up what we need to do as a city to elevate and provide the resources we need to continue to grow. So I appreciate that, Dr. Haskin, and I think this is a, a good start for us.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I, I had a question. I mean, obviously I feel the same way about Mr. Wallingford as everyone else. But my question specifically about the deliverables within the agreement and the contract. He will be, I guess, submitting some type of written report, from what I understand, and reading the agreement to the city monthly or quarterly or whatever the case may be. And, and then that report, I assume will then be communicated to council.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Question I have.
Okay.
Oh, I was just going to ask, Dr. Haskin, you've, you've had this kind of experience in other locations, right, in working?
Yes, absolutely, Mayor, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, Tamika?
And then those things, I know, you know, we all got two, three, four jobs, but it's our job to serve our city. So, you know, any thing that's necessary for us to need to be able to facilitate or help consult with Wayne, we'd be more than willing to do so. Then he'll know who we are and what role we play. And that'd be able to help us in a line of things that we already do within the city. So if you can keep us pressed up that, Dr. Haskin.
I, I think that is paramount. I think that's critical because all of you have experiences with Mr. Wallingford and you know him fairly well, a, a lot better than I do, obviously. And, and I think that that comment there is, is going to go a long way. And I think it will help launch Wayne into this role and, and to execute the needs of the city.
And I also wanted to point out that other cities, Springfield and New, and of course Kansas City and St. Louis, all have people up there representing them and their interests. And Cape Girardeau needs to be represented up there too, besides just our lawmakers. I mean, Springfield has lawmakers, St. Louis, but they also have, have other people up there, you know, representing them and, and their specific community needs. So I think we just have to recognize that we're in competition with other cities up there when it comes to some funding. So I think we gotta keep that in mind.
And, and just, I'm sorry, Mayor, one last thing, just to confirm, this, this service agreement is not for lobbying services per se, right? This is just for him to monitor legislation and to report back on that legislation. Any potential lobbying, you know, whether it be with him or someone else, may come down the road further.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, and I'll just point out, Mr. Wallingford is not a registered lobbyist. We, we are not, yeah, we are not hiring a lobbyist and.
Well, I, I understand that. I just think for maybe the public, it should be important for them to understand that we're not hiring a lobbyist at this point, you know.
I'm glad you, I'm glad you brought that up, yes. Dr. Haskin, I mean, I think you see this as more of a, at this point, a consultancy.
Yes, absolutely.
And it's a short term. It's for, this agreement is for three months. And, you know, there'll be some assessment after that to see, you know, if we want to, if we want to continue this in the following year.
Well, I, I hope that, that that lobbyist title isn't, isn't lost in, in the future for this session. I mean, it's only three more months, I think. And, and then, and then we'll have an opportunity, I would hope, to sit down with Mr. Wallingford, with, with, with our other delegate, with the other elected officials, with, with John and with Mr. Jamie and, and Barry. I think for us to collectively get where we want to go, I think it's important that prior to the next session, that we have a think tank. I know, I know right now, water is our issue. And I know that's what, I know that's what John's working on. I know that's what Wayne's working on. And hopefully I've asked Wayne to reach out to John and so that they, that they are talking to the same people and, and not overlapping. And to express the, the dire situation that I think we're in. But prior to the next session, I think we need to make sure that we're together, we're on the same page and, and, and working towards that, those common goals. And an opportunity to sit down and do so face to face, not on the phone, not over a chat or, or a Zoom, but at City Hall would be a fantastic opportunity and, and, and critical to what we're trying to accomplish here.
Well, agreed. I, I, I think we all agree with that. And, and I know Mr. Wallingford and, and our rep, our city rep, John Voss, agree with that. In fact, last week, our area representatives and Senator Berger met with, with me and Deputy City Manager Pulli, a few other people to start talking about those, you know, those, those issues that we see needing some good communication at the state level. We're meeting again at the end of this week and certainly Mr. Wallingford would be a part of that. Again, this whole model really is for Mr. Wallingford to work in conjunction with our state representatives. Not, not separate, but with.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I just wanted to add and thank the, the city staff for, for taking this. This is, this is something that I've been saying for a number of years, eight, 10 years, that we need to strengthen that presence on Capitol Hill. And then, and I'll tell you, you know, as, as we've talked about this over the last couple of years, last couple of months, it's, you know, to get someone with the experience and the credibility of his, the knowledge of the legislative process as well as the rules promulgation of the, of the executive branch, as well as federal level. And to also have him be a citizen of our community, that tie doesn't happen that often. You could go hire a firm, but this is someone who's, you know, committed to our community in a way unlike any of those firms would be. And so I really look forward to how he's going to help add and strengthen not only in the House and the Senate, but also in the governor's office and then also with Congressman Jason Smith's office. And I really look forward, there's, things happen really fast in Jefferson City and in Washington DC. There's multiple committee hearings with a plethora of bills every day being considered. And just, you know, I know several of us, we, we rely on those same legislative consultants or firms that relay information about those, whether it's through our professional organizations or our own occupations or other entities. But to get that directly related to us as a city and how things could affect us will be tremendously, tremendously valuable. And I really look forward to how Wayne's gonna, gonna work with our, our elected officials and really get things moving forward for us, so.
Any other points of discussion? Okay, well, hearing none then, is there a motion to approve bill twenty-five twenty-three?
So moved.
So good.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor then of bill twenty-five twenty-three, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Next, we have bill twenty-five sixteen, in ordinance authorizing the acquisition of temporary construction easements from various property owners for the Cape Rock Drive Sidewalk Transportation Alternatives Program, TAP, Grant Projects in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. That's the second reading. Our first reading was, was two weeks ago. I'll read then the third reading and then we can discuss. Bill twenty-five sixteen, in ordinance authorizing the acquisition of temporary construction easements from various property owners for the Cape Rock Drive Sidewalk Transportation Alternatives Program Grants Project in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Mr. Pulli?
Mayor, council, Dr. Haskin, this is a ordinance authorizing city employees to speak with the interested parties regarding the temporary construction easement only.
All right, thank you. Council, discussion?
So just like we, we talked about during the last meeting, this is just the ordinance that allows for the discussion on those temporary easements. And so this just kind of gets that whole, whole conversation started. You know, I, I think I, I share some concerns about the, the, the ability to get it all done. And I'm really relying on, on city engineers and staff because the topography and everything of this sidewalk, to me, while I'm thinking of it, seems pretty, pretty hard. But, you know, this is just the start of that conversation.
Well, I would, you know, I'll throw something in, Dan, it, it, just so that everyone's aware, it's, it's not the start of the conversation of this whole project. In fact, I, some background information, I mean, this has been talked about in the city since going back 10 years, actually. But we applied in 2018 for this grant and were awarded the project. And, and I want to assure everybody, in that process, this, there was, there was a lot of public outreach and communication, a lot of information submitted by, by citizens that was highly favorable of this project. Sempo, our Metropolitan Planning Organization, then took it under its, under its purview, did a lot of surveying and, and as well. In fact, I will say, in 2018, Sempo adopted their regional bicycle and pedestrian plan. And there were 39 proposed sidewalk projects on that plan. And this was the number one ranked project in Cape, in the city of Cape. So from there, Sempo was, was very involved in, in getting this. In 2022, we were rewarded. Um, in twenty twenty-two, we were rewarded um, this grant. And um, there have been a number of resolutions um, over a number of years within the city that pertain to all of this, and they have all been passed, and there's been public, you know, discussion of those. So, um, just wanna make sure everybody understands, this is a project that has been um, approved and, and well-vetted um, for a long, long time. Um, where we stand now, um, is um, uh, the, the, we're authorizing the city to begin the discussion with all of the property owners along this route to uh, to discuss easements. And I was, I was told today, um, there are, um, there were, have been a hundred and eight shovel tests performed, um, sorry, uh, requested, a hundred and seven were performed. Uh, there was one property owner, uh, the gentleman who, who appeared two weeks ago, did not allow um, the city to get, to do the shovel test on his property, but all others did. Um, and uh, what the city needs to go about doing now, uh, per this approval, is to um, communicate about, uh, with all the property owners about their um, easements and, and all of that. So that's what this approval is for.
Um, I, I'm glad we pulled this off the consent agenda, um, because while I understand that we are just approving the easements, and I said that numerous times the last meeting, because I felt like some of the information was getting a little off base, but the, the information did get off base, and now there, I, I believe there's information floating around out there that's not, well, it's not true about some of the associated costs with completing this project. And I know Mr. Pullley shared some of those costs with us and shared those with other people, and um, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, it was made known that, you know, the cost of completing this project, you, these are not numbers that were just pulled out of a hat somewhere, right, Trevor? I mean, we, I mean, these are, these are, these are accurate numbers that, you know, uh, um, and, and, and the cost is not in the millions for this, and certainly, the city's a portion of the cost is considerably low, uh, compared to the overall benefit that's gonna be brought to the city by uh, completing this project. So, uh, thank you, I just wanted to mention that.
Correct, sir. Yes, these numbers that were given to council on the uh, updated version, these were obtained by our engineering staffs to do the updated uh, amount, and it's uh, the cost benefit, what we obtained through these TAP grants are beneficial to the city.
Any further discussion? Okay, um, is there a motion then to approve uh, bill twenty-five sixteen?
So moved.
He's there.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor then of bill twenty-five sixteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. We have one new ordinance tonight, but before we do that, we understand Mr. Nick Martin is back online, is online, and um, would like to make his uh, P and Z report. And so, Mr. Martin, thank you for your patience, thanks for your perseverance, and uh, love to, we'd love to hear your report.
I'm sure that was operator error, error earlier, sorry, guys. Can you all hear me now?
Yes.
All right, well, um, this will be short and sweet. Um, we actually, um, at our last meeting, we did not have any items that came up um, for rezoning, special use permits or exceptions. Um, Mrs. Um, uh, Lisa came through and did a presentation for us on the CIP programs. We're very appreciative of that. Uh, so thank you, Mrs. Mills. And then, um, we had two subdivision plats come through. One was, the first one was Young House Meadowbrook Subdivision Record Plat, unanimously approved, and then the second, that's down on South Sprig, and the second was Webster Sprig Subdivision Record Plat, which is um, right at Sprig and Broadway, close to, close to that, also unanimously, unanimously approved. Nothing special there. Um, we did go back and had, had um, some election, reelections of officers for the year. Uh, nothing changed with the slate stayed the same, Scott Blank stayed in as chairman, myself as vice chairman, and Chris Martin as secretary. Uh, other than that, we, um, Mr. Tremplin gave an update on TTF seven, and um, nothing, we haven't had a meeting since November, and there hasn't been a lot on the agenda, so uh, there wasn't really um, any other updates going forward to council for you guys, but, so, that should be it. Any questions?
None. Thank you, uh, again, for sticking around and, and making that, making that happen.
My pleasure. You guys have a good evening, stay safe.
Thanks. Okay, we have one new ordinance on the agenda tonight, and that is bill twenty-five twenty-two, an ordinance accepting a permanent water line easement for property located at eleven twelve Linden Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. This is the first reading. Mr. Pullley.
Thank you, Mayor, Dr. Haskin, Council. This ordinance accepts the permanent water line easement for the property located at one-one-one-two Linden Street, which is a new constructed Gibson Center. Uh, we need to accept the new water main and new hydrant for the new construction.
Okay, is there anyone in the public who wishes to make a comment? Nicole, do we have anyone? I don't think we, you indicated that we do.
No one indicating they want to speak.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, then, uh, Council, is there um, a motion to approve bill twenty-five twenty-two?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, hearing none then, all in favor of bill twenty-five twenty-two, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Mayor, I need, Mayor, I need to abstain for financial conflict of interest.
Thank you for noting that. Um, any objections? All right, hearing none then, uh, uh, we have approved bill twenty-five twenty-two, thank you. Um, we had uh, some appointments to make tonight. Um, first was one appointment to the University of Missouri Extension Council. Um, this is a little bit of a weird one, because according to Missouri State statutes, this appointment is to come just from the mayor. And so, I'm appointing James Newman to this position. Mr. Newman was recommended by the University of Missouri Extension Office, and he has served in this position um, already for the past two years. Is there a motion to approve, Mr. Newman?
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, any discussion? All right, all in favor of appointing Mr. Newman to the University of Missouri Extension Council?
Aye.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that carries. Congratulations to James Newman. And then we had two appointments to make to the tree board. Um, council has previously submitted their selections, and those votes are for Robert Harris and Jonathan Notch. Is there a motion to approve those two to the tree board?
So moved. Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor then of Mr. Harris and Mr. Notch for the tree board, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, congratulations to those two for their appointments. Um, there was no, no one registering any uh, interest in appearing uh, for an item not on the agenda? Council, any other for the good of the board issues? All right, hearing none then, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
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 All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all.